All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. This is the City of Garden City Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for August 21st, 2024, and let it show that it is 6:30. We do have a new person with us today, Mr. Wyatt King. He's joining us, the new assistant planner for the City of Garden City. So thanks for being here and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
All right, Ms. Veal, audio and video all set?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We'll now call the meeting to order. Let the record show that we have Commissioner Smith, Wild Shepherd, and Montoya present. We have Commissioner Brown, who is not here today, but we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Staff, do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
Chairman, sorry about the delay on that. None by staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move into the consent agenda. This commission provides for a public hearing for quasi judicial administrative land use decisions, appeals, and legislative actions specific to land use regulations. The format for the public hearing will follow the procedure as follows. First, presentation by the applicant, city staff report, public testimony, rebuttal testimony from the applicant, a discussion of the hearing among the commissioners, and then the decision. If anybody from the public wishes to give testimony, there are some rules. No person shall be permitted to speak at the hearing until the person is recognized by the chair. To do so, the commission will not address those who speak out of order. If you have questions, you can ask them during your turn for public testimony, and the applicant can respond to them during the rebuttal, or the commission can ask the question of staff during the discussion. If you are interested, please sign up on the signup sheet for the application that you wish to give public testimony for. No person shall be permitted to testify at the hearing unless such person has signed their full name and written their residential address on the signup sheets. When you do approach, please state your name and address into the microphone at the podium. And so with the consent agenda, the consent agenda includes items of business which may not require separate discussion. From time to time, we may move an item to the consent agenda. Following the addition of any items to the consent agenda, we will vote on the remaining items in one motion. So we have three items on the regular consent agenda tonight. We do have four items on the public hearing. I do believe that there is one item that could be moved, and that is the CUP FY2024-0009, conditional use permit, and that is for 499 North Glenwood Street, located in the C2 general commercial zoning district, and this is the item for the drive-through. Is the applicant in the room? Thank you. Have you read the decision documents from staff? And I believe that we did get a late submission from ITD that was then modified in the decision document to remove the condition that it was previously in the decision document. Is that correct?
Yes, that's true, Chairman.
And so with that removal, are you good with the conditions as set forth in the decision document? Is there any member of the public that's here to testify on that item? All right, seeing none, is there any reason to have the discussion with the commission?
Just excited for a big one in my town.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, so we will entertain a motion to move that on to the consent agenda. I would also like to discuss, before we move into a motion, CPA FY2024-0005. That is the Decision Review and Administration. I believe that we do have members of the public that are here to testify on that item. That is the Design Review and Administration. Is that correct? Okay, so we'll hold off on that one. So that's the one on the Design Review and Administration, so the review process. So we'll keep that one on the regular agenda. We also have one other item, that's CPA FY2024-0004, buffers. I wanted to open a discussion amongst the commission members before we decided on what to do with this one. We have had some updates that were sent over by Jenna later this week, and I've had a chance to review this item. It would be, in my opinion, a good idea to think about potentially moving this into a work session so that we can discuss this item. Potentially move, have a work session September, at the September meeting, and then have it at the hearing on October 16th, so that we can get through this. In the meantime, we could provide Jenna and staff with any questions, and then that way, next month, we would be able to discuss the items and make sure that staff can discuss with us what our concerns are. Based on my review, I do have some concerns that there's quite a bit here, and I just worry that this could be a pretty beefy discussion, and I'm not sure that we're ready to go through that full discussion on this at this point. So I would open it up for potentially a motion to move this item to a date certain. And as a matter of order, Jenna, would we want to do that as a date certain for October 16th?
Chairman, yes, please. If we're going to have that work session on, in September, if October 16th would then be the hearing to make sure that we could incorporate any changes. However, I might ask the chairman if there are people here to testify today, if the commission would like to open and keep the hearing open today.
Thank you. Yeah, that was my thought, but just before we, if we were to keep it on the actual the action item, that you weren't going to be prepared to then present everything with an understanding that we would then be pushing it, so just so that we could set it out right first, so. With that being said, is there anybody from the public who would like to testify on CPA FY2024-0004 titled buffers? This is the amending sections of the Garden Code, 8-2B based zoning district provisions, and 8-2B-1 purposes, 8-2B2 allowed uses, 8-2B3 form standards, 8-4I landscaping and tree preservation, and 8-4I5 perimeter landscaping, 8-4B design provisions for residential structures, and 8-4B4 multifamily residential dwelling units, 8-4C design provisions for non-residential structures, 8-4C-3 provisions for non-residential development. Anybody here from the public that would like to testify? That is the one?
Yeah, I'm here to testify to that.
Okay. So, yeah, in my mind, the idea would be that we would leave the hearing open. At the next meeting, we would still continue to have it as an action item where we could come and discuss and have that open to the public to hear what the testimony would be, so that we can include that in our thinking and discussion during the work sessions.
Chairman, I think that would work. However, I think Ms. Layton is asking to specifically be able to interact with the commission during the work session is what I think she's asking.
Yeah, I mean, in some of her sessions, the work sessions bring in other stakeholders that discuss things. I mean, I'm not sure how to best.
I defer to you, Jenna, and other commissioners on how that would work.
Chairman, the city has done both ways, where it tends to be interacting with the staff. The staff will work with the public and bring the public's concerns distilled typically to the boards, and then the commission, in the past when we've done work sessions, have had commission-specific work sessions. But certainly, the commission could decide to have whatever format that they would like with a work session. I can throw out, if there are members of the public that specifically want to discuss items with me, that I'd be happy to distill them if you choose not to have the public participate in a work session.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Wild.
I we can have any kind of format we decide. I think what I would prefer is, and I think in a work session is a great idea, that we set a date for us to provide comments to staff, so that they can be prepared at the work session to address some of our questions, concerns, whatever they might be, but also for the time between now and that work session for Jenna to be able to interact with whoever wants to talk about it. I don't, it's not really a work session if we're interacting in that. We should call it something else. I'm not opposed to that. It's just, it's not really a commission work session.
Okay, so. Thank you. Great. All right, so perhaps on the motion, when we move it, we would have a date set for comments by the commissioners, and then we would ask staff to work with the public and then bring forward at the work session any comments so that we can discuss those.
Makes sense.
All right, so just making sure that we have covered the items. We have heard from the applicant on CUP FY2024-009, that he is good with moving the item to the consent, and that we are going to potentially entertain a motion on CPA FY2024-004 to move that to the consent agenda to have it as a date certain as well. As far as the other items that we have on the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from July 17th, 2024. Item B, CPA FY2024-0006, the planned unit development moved to continue to October 16th, 2024, and CPA FY2024-007, that item continued to October 16th, 2024 as well. Any other discussion from staff or the commissioners on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wild.
I move approval of the consent agenda to include the approval of minutes from July 17th, 2024, planning and zoning commission regular meeting. Also to include continued hearings on CPA FY2024-6 and 2024-7 to a date certain of October 16th, 2024. Also to move to a date certain of October 16th, 2024, the CPA FY2024-4, and also to set a work session for the regular meeting in September. And also to consent agenda approval to include CUP FY2024-9.
I have a motion from Commissioner Wild. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? The ayes have it. All right, thank you. You're good to go with the item CUP FY2024-009. Thank you. We will now get into the new business section of the agenda on the public hearing, the action item. CUP FY2024-008, conditional use permit. Chad Welton with Erstadt Architects is requesting a conditional use for a parking facility at 508 East Fortia Street, Ada County, parcel R2734560160, located in the C2DA general commercial zoning district. Again, just for the sake of the presentation, we will hear from the applicant, and then we will hear from the staff, any public testimony, a rebuttal from the applicant, and then we'll have a discussion among the commissioner members and then the decision. So we will hear the presentation from you, Mr. Welton, and if you could, again, please state your name and address.
Thank you.
Chad Welton, Erstadt Architects, 310 North Fifth Street, Boise. I also have my client, Mike Talbot with Vita Properties, is online on the meeting. He may, in case any items come up that he needs to address. Hannah, can you help me pull up the? Okay. Thank you, commissioners. We're talking about the lot on 508 East Fortieth Street. It is currently zone C2, and ultimately, our request tonight is to place a surface, a temporary surface parking lot on the site. We submitted our application a few months back, got the staff report, and since then, have made some adjustments to the site plan to respond to some of the comments and issues that were arising in the staff report. So I'd like to just briefly go through those for you tonight and kind of explain. And I believe Hannah's going to kind of address some of those as well. But we are now at 67 parking spaces with a row of compact spaces in the center, which is less than 30% of the total, so that's code compliant. We don't yet have updated matching civil and landscape plans, but the intent is that they would follow this updated architectural site plan. So the main issues that came up in the staff report were, number one, there was an issue with fence alignment, or specifically fences not aligning with property lines. The fences that are on the north side and the south side of this property today do not correspond and align with the property lines. We originally had been trying to work within the confines of the actual fence lines. It was kind of pointed out pretty quickly that that wasn't the way to proceed. So we've now adjusted our site plan to align with the property lines. And so we are proposing new six-foot-tall fences on the north and south property lines with the east ends being pulled back 10 feet from the back of sidewalk on Fortieth Street as recommended by code. We also previously had a situation where there was no landscape setback on the north side. We have, again, pulled the parking lot away from the north side to create that setback. We now have landscape setbacks on both sides, north and south. There was a recommendation or requirement to improve Fortieth Street with curb gutter and sidewalk. We are now, we've incorporated that into the design, and there was a request for connectivity through the site by means of a sidewalk, which we've now incorporated from east to west. Given that the long-term intent of this site is that it will not remain a surface parking lot. The intent is that this will probably be used for about three to four years. And so there's a real goal to not sink a bunch of money into something that is short-term. We know it doesn't fall within the confines of the city's definition of short-term, but in actuality, the intent is that this is not a long-term use. Ultimately, my client intends to develop this with a structure on it. So given that, our request is that we get a five-year deferral on completion of the following items. The curb gutter and sidewalk improvements along Fortieth Street, the sidewalk through the site, landscaping, potentially undergrounding of any power lines, and the asphalt surface paving. We would like to simply do a gravel lot at this time. So with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Chair.
Commissioner.
You're, you you're asking for a five-year deferral, which means the CUP would end at five years. Yes, is that kind of what you're thinking? You only need the condition use for five years.
In effect, I believe, I believe that's accurate. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shepherd.
So with wanting the gravel lot, and am I correct that there's no landscaping in the gravel lot? Are you just going to have, like, cement blocks to create the parking spaces? Is that what you're thinking?
It would be fairly wide open at this point, yeah. We're open, you know, if the commission requires certain minimum things to make this work, we're open to discussing that, but our request is to keep it very simple. Again, given that it's, it's really a temporary use.
You think it'll be three to four years before it's developed?
Our request is for five.
Mr. Smith, any questions?
No.
So I do have a question for you, and so are you proposing to not do any improvements at all until the five years? Or is there some scope that you would be including? What exactly? So it sounds like you've created a plan that you never intend to produce, but it would potentially, some of it would meet code compliance. So are you thinking that you're going to do any of it, or what does it look like?
I, I think the intent is that we've created a plan here that ultimately, if this use were to extend beyond the five-year cutoff, we would be required to have these, all these items in place and approved by that point in time. But at the moment, we're requesting to not have to do them.
And so I'm speculating that that's because you don't want to have to tear all this out when you go to build a building?
That's exactly right.
And so would you be willing to post a bond for the cost of the improvements?
I'm going to let my client answer that.
Good evening, commissioners. This is Mike Talbot with Vita Properties. Can everybody hear well?
Yep, we can hear, yes.
Okay. The answer, posting a bond for the improvements, if those improvements aren't going to be required in the essence of the plan submitted to you, and there'll be modifications, possible curb cut or changes to the access to the lot when the structure is built, the bond probably wouldn't be accurate for the scope of work. And the bond usually is in place to assure these will get done. Maybe what we just do is a performance bond of some sort, but not necessarily tied to these very specifics, because the whole point here is that we're, until we get the building structure designed and figure it all out, and we're quite not sure what we will put there and what it'll look like and what the street improvements will be. You know, we'll have to go through ACHD for permission and, and design as well. So we see things being changed around and moved around a little bit, so we're concerned about making a commitment to an exact plan like this.
Thank you. And, yeah, the reason, you know, my thought process on this, and the reason why I'm asking is because intentions can change, and the last thing that I want is, or I think the last thing that the city would want would be to approve something that's never installed. And so at that point, you have a gravel lot that's been approved for five years, and it's sitting there for five years. I appreciate the notion of having the parking to get people off of the street, so I certainly appreciate that, just, just thinking about different ways of how to think through it, but.
Vita, Vita, Vita Properties would be open to accommodating that assurance to make sure that the city isn't going down a dead-end road, because we are obviously expended some money to buy this lot, and we're going to be improving this for parking. We have no intention of letting it sit that way. It doesn't monetize well. So ultimately, we have more motivation than anybody to approve this lot. But I appreciate the comment. I know where you're going with it. We're open to listening to any kind of suggestion you may have.
Okay. Is there any other questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I have another question about the landscaping. I'm trying to envision what it looks like with no landscaping. I'm not familiar with what it looks like right now. And I'm thinking it probably, I don't know how much it would cost to put in some, some form of landscaping, just so that it looks like more than just a gravel lot. I mean, it's a nice area. It's redeveloping. It just seems like that's going to be a big piece of land that's just gravel parking lot for five years. Would you be willing to put up any kind of, like, we've had other people put in, like, potted landscaping, if they weren't going to put in something more, like, in the ground.
I, I think we'd be open to some nominal amount of embellishment like that, or possibly some plantings limited just to along Fortieth Street where it matters most.
If I may, to Mike Talbot again from Vita Properties, Commissioner, we'd be my permission to speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. We, just to give some color here, we're the owners of the boardwalk next door, and we have a viable interest in making sure this neighborhood is well-kept, well-designed, and continues to move forward. So some landscaping without question would be nice on Fortieth, as Mr. Welton suggested. And we would be not at all against making sure that the parking lot looks nice and doesn't have the rustic look of a, you know, middle-of-the-desert parking area with dust clouds.
All right, thanks, sir. Any other questions? Commissioners? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll hear from staff, Ms. Veal.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. And this application is for the use of a parking facility located at 508 East Fortieth Street. The intent is to provide 67 additional parking spaces for patrons of the Boardwalk building and facility, as well as the Green Belt and adjacent residential and retail and restaurants. While on-street parking is permitted in the surrounding area, this parking facility will help to relocate some of those on-street parking spaces to this parking lot, so the streets aren't quite as congested. The application consists of lot 17 and 18 of Fairview Acre subdivision. A lot consolidation is not required as part of this application, simply because they're not proposing a structure on, on-site. However, in the future, when and if a structure is proposed, a lot consolidation will be required at that time. We have received multiple agency comments for the application. ACHD is requiring right-of-way improvements, including curb and gutter, as well as sidewalk. And FIRE has required changes to the outside turning radius of the original submitted plans. Boise Fire has not seen these resubmittals from August 13th, so they have not provided additional comments. And to speak of temporary uses, the temporary use is not allowed to operate on a site for a maximum of three months, or they're only allowed to operate on a site for a maximum of three months. Any temporary use that is seeking permit renewal for that same temporary use on the same property is required to go through the proper permitting processes that the city has. So for this application, it would be a conditional use permit and a design review application. There are special provisions for temporary use under Garden City Code 82C38. Those were not reviewed as part of this application, since it doesn't technically meet the standards of a temporary use. Those were not reviewed as part of this application since it doesn't technically meet the standards of a temporary use. The applicant has submitted a design review application as part of their permit process. It is scheduled to be reviewed and I won't call it heard, but discussed in September. Staff will have had time to look at the resubmittals from August 13th and update the staff report at that time. And because the planning official is the official deciding body on a design review, staff can take the conditions made here today as part of their conditional use permit and ensure that it is applicable to the design review application as well. If the parking lot is to be paved at any point in time, a public works permit will be required for the site grading, drainage, and stormwater retention. Even if the permit extension is granted for five years or whatever allotted amount of time, if they pave it, they'll need a public works permit. The staff report highlights areas of code in compliance, including pedestrian pathways, sidewalks, and landscaping. However, the staff report was not updated to reflect the August 13th resubmittals, as I have already stated. But staff, I was able to do a quick review before this hearing tonight. And it appears that a detached sidewalk, a pedestrian pathway through the site, connecting the public sidewalk to the boardwalk property, perimeter landscaping along the northern property boundary line, and new fences are all proposed, which would meet code compliance and un-highlight those areas of the staff report. That being said, though, I would recommend keeping all of the drafted conditions of approval just based off of the lack of updated landscape plans and lack of information provided on the site plans. Or at least the new submitted site plans. What remains non-compliant is the lack of the screening landscaping. Code states that no part of any parking area for more than 10 motor vehicles shall be closer than 20 feet to any dwelling unit on an adjacent lot, unless separated by a screen in compliance with the provision set forth in 84I landscaping and tree protection provisions. The parking lot appears to be closer to dwelling units on the adjacent northern and southern property, properties, while only providing five feet of landscaping per the new site plans. The 84I landscaping and tree protection provisions states that perimeter landscaping for screening needs to be 10 feet wide and meeting some subcategories of that screening requirement. And the commission in the past has allowed for a five-foot-wide perimeter landscaping buffer, which this new plan is providing. But the condition in the decision document requires that it's the 10 feet. Another area of non-compliance is the internal shade trees provided. So code requires a certain ratio of one tree planted for every five vehicle parking spaces. This does not include the required perimeter landscaping trees, which need to be planted at every 15 feet or as the tree class size allows. At this ratio of one tree per five vehicles and 67 spaces being provided, there's 13 internal shade trees required. An item that is not required, however, it should be considered as bike parking. As the use is a parking facility, there in the chart of code, it does not require bike parking spaces. However, just based off of the location of the parking lot and the green belt and the boardwalk being so nearby, it might be an adequate condition to require bike parking. There is a condition in the drafted decision already. However, this, the amount is not set. So there would need to be discussion regarding that or elimination. If an extension of five years or any other timeframe is granted, construction and completion of the required improvements would be required prior to the cup expiring. And if the cup expires and the improvements are not made, then that, then the use of a parking lot or parking facility would need to be, or need to cease to exist immediately, whereas as soon as the conditional use permit expires. Conditions can be drafted in the decision document to allow for an extension. But in the meantime, also requiring certain improvements be made. It just would need to be discussed tonight by the commission. If that will stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Any questions for Hannah?
I do have a question.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Mr. Chair. Hannah, you mentioned the, something in the beginning about the fire access. And I see in the staff report that the fire department has requested, required a certain turning radius and to make appropriate changes for their access. And how do you think that will change based on it being just an open gravel lot? Maybe that's a question for the applicant, is how they're gonna like manage where people park.
Yeah. Commissioner Shepherd, I think it would be hard to regulate where people park unless there's the condition requiring that the gravel parking lot has painted striping. And then at that point, the fire department could at least measure or assume that they have adequate turning radius. But I can't speak for the fire department. And you, maybe the applicant can speak more to it.
Commissioner Smith.
Hannah, based on your knowledge of other projects around the city, how many bike parking spaces would you recommend?
Well, I would say we could defer to the table. And then the commission can decide if the parking lot and adjacent uses that people would be going to, maybe it's considered a high use or more of a medium use, and then look to that chart. The chart defers or utilizes the square footage allowed towards that use. So if you have a high use at 2,000 square feet, then one bike parking is required for every 500 square feet. So, sorry, I didn't do math very well.
Me neither, but I'm trying. Thank you. That's helpful.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we will open it up for public testimony. So do we have anybody from the public that's here to testify on this item? All right, seeing none, then we will allow the applicant rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To address the question about the fire turn radius, we actually are already in compliance, even though the, the, what we are showing as the future curb and gutter turn into the site if and when needed and developed, the radius is tighter than that. Once you consider the actual approach of a fire truck from the right lane and you map out the turning radius into the site, it actually already is compliant with that 20th requirement. And we would be happy to provide an exhibit that that shows that. And if in the future, we do get to year five and have to make these improvements, we easily make sure that we are accommodating that requirement with the actual curb and gutter itself. Hannah mentioned the, the perimeter landscape buffer on the north and south sides being five feet, when technically the code requires 10 feet. As, as she mentioned, it's our understanding that in the past, you have allowed that 10-foot buffer to be split between, in this case, our property and the neighboring properties, so that we would only be responsible for five feet of that buffering. So that is the approach we've taken in order to get a reasonable number of parking spaces on the site. The question about the number of shade trees, if, again, if we get to year five and still need this use to exist as a surface parking lot, we would gladly be amenable to a condition that says, at that point in time, we do have to have the correct number of shade trees and, you know, in and around the lot. Not a problem with that. The question about bike parking is an interesting one. You know, the, your, your code does specify, obviously, the number of bike spaces required for a certain use. And this use does not require any bike parking. And in our opinion, it doesn't really make sense. You know, the intent here is to provide a place for people with cars to come and park. If somebody is on a bicycle coming to this area, you know, if they're going to use the boardwalk restaurants and whatnot, we've got ample bike parking out in front of there. If they're, if they're coming down here to park their bike and walk on the green belt, which I think is sort of unusual, but that might be the case, there's, there's bike racks along the green belt itself. So in our mind, it doesn't really make sense to require bike parking in and for a car parking lot. And I have a suggestion on kind of the, the way that I think maybe the condition could be worded, because we're, you know, we've kind of mentioned, does the conditional use cease to exist a year or five? You know, in all likelihood, it does, but it seems to me that a reasonable way to word the condition of approval might be that, you know, if we hit that fifth year, either the conditional use ceases to be needed, or if it is still needed, improvements have to be in place in order to continue that use. And I've already kind of listed out the improvements that we're asking for that deferral on. So that's just a kind of a suggestion of maybe how that condition could be worded. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioners, any other questions? I do have a question for you. So on the decision document, you've had a chance to review that?
Yes.
And so are there any items within that document that you're actually asking to have waived? Or are you fine with all the conditions as prepared in the decision document? You're just really asking for a deferral?
The latter.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right with that, this matter is now before the commission. We are a decision-making body for the CUP, and I will open it up for discussion. Commissioner Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do think that some landscaping should be required and I guess we're talking about, it's going to be like the five-feet landscaping, landscaping buffer on the perimeter and along 40th Street. I do think that that should be on there. So and I understand that the applicant said that they're, they're good with making it look nice. I mean, I understand they also have an economic reason to want it to look good because of the broadway, sorry, boardwalk right there. So that I'm kind of interested in hearing what the other commissioners say. I mean, they own the property, we need more parking. It does take off some of the congestion from the street. It's temporary. With that, I'm as long as, as long as it's safe and there's adequate lighting and they have some bike parking there as well, I think that that I would be in favor of bringing it.
Commissioner Shepherd, just to make sure that I'm clear, so you would be acceptable to the deferral, but they would be required to install some sort of landscaping and maybe some other improvements in advance of that five years? Am I understanding that correct?
Yes, landscaping, bike parking. It's already a condition. Well, it's a condition in the decision document for future outdoor lighting to be required. I guess my question there, for past the question part is we're talking about a five-year deferral, when this future, that the lighting, I think, needs to be in place now and needs to be safe.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wild.
Five years is a long time. I don't like establishing a precedent of deferring these obligations for five years. On the other hand, I get it. I think at my day job, we have several dirt lots that we don't develop because we need to use the parking and we anticipate building a building at some time. So I, I think I understand pretty well why the request is here. I, I think, you know, if I'm still here in five years, I think I would have little sympathy if the CUP were sought to be extended and the work had been done. So I think I'd be supportive of this deferral request with a, a note to the applicant that if you come, if, 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 if things change and five years rolls around and nothing's been done, I, if I'm still here, I probably won't have a lot of sympathy. So that's kind of where my head's at on this.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm having similar thoughts as the other commissioners. I think five years is a long time to have nothing. I, I think that you need to be conditioned to address safety. I think lighting is a big one. You need to have lighting. It doesn't have to be beautiful lighting, but it needs, it needs to be safe. And I'm also supportive of a condition for basic landscaping so that it looks decent. I, I understand that, that the developer doesn't want to put in a lot of trees and irrigation and landscaping that's just going to get ripped out. That, that doesn't make any sense. But at least basic perimeter landscaping so that it's not an eyesore for five years. But beyond that, I, I, I'm somewhat persuaded, I think, by the comments about the bike parking fact that there's significant bike parking on the boardwalk and there's bike parking along Green Belt. I, I laughed a little and agreed with the comment that people don't usually park their bike to take a walk. They're in, that's, that's not usually something folks do. So I, I'm not particularly concerned about the bike parking, but I do think very basic landscaping and lighting would be conditions that would make me comfortable with a five-year deferral on pretty much everything else.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. I too agree with the fellow commissioners. I, the five years does seem to be extensive, but I understand it. It does take time to get plans approved and entitlements. So I certainly can understand why five years, just to be safe and not having to come back. Agree with Commissioner Wild, but I do believe that if we have a motion, that it would hopefully have some sort of language regarding what happens at the end of the five years. As far as the improvements, agree with some of the landscaping and more so probably because of the screening nature and just making sure that it doesn't look out of place and horrible. I do think that the safety is a component with the the lighting. I agree with Commissioner Smith on the bike parking. I'm probably not, I'm indifferent. So if it's a motion, I would support it. Do appreciate that the applicant has taken the time, gone through this process, the investment at the boardwalk. I think that's an impressive project. So glad to see that that's coming together. So yeah, I don't have anything else to add besides just agree with the fellow commissioner. So any other discussion on this topic? Any other questions? Comments? All right, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion.
So if you're gonna have lighting and landscaping, I'm in.
Do we want to have a, and we can have a further discussion if you'd like to on what improvements you'd like to have in the timeframe for that.
I think maybe just a little more discussion to. I think maybe just a little more discussion to I, I feel like we're, we're in agreement, but we haven't quite locked down the, the timing of what we're requiring when. So on, on lighting. So my understanding is that the intention is to hold all of the requirements, but defer them and then add particular requirements for the five-year window. Is that correct?
I was thinking deferral of the obligations with a few exceptions. So that use pursuant to the CUP would be conditioned on those, let's say, lighting. Obligations. Investments.
Lighting.
I'm ho-hum on landscaping, but lighting seems
lighting.
Appropriate.
Is it sufficient to say compliant code?
I'm ho-hum on bike parking. Yes.
It might be good to be specific on which landscaping, because if we say specifically pursuant to code, then it could trigger quite a bit of required landscaping. So.
Commissioner Shepard, on the landscaping with the five foot versus the 10 foot buffer, I'm trying to remember your, your point on that. Did you have a bottom setback distance or more the location of the landscape being along, I think it was 43rd?
Um, well, the north and south, right? Is that is the, are the, is the north and south, that's the longer edge, right? So that's the five foot.
What were you thinking on 40th Street?
Well, I was thinking some kind of beautification on 40th Street, like maybe planters. Not trees or anything that need to be, you know, pulled out eventually. I don't know what kind of irrigation is on the site already. Some flat feet along the, those north and south and then now up to leaving it up to if we have to decide exactly, then I'm, I mean, the, the planters that we just approved not too long ago. Remember the street? Those look really nice, the silver ones with all the flowers.
So the deferred conditions have perimeter landscaping on the northern and southern property boundary lines. At least 10 feet wide. So would we be comfortable reducing that to essentially beautification landscaping, I like the way we phrase it? Of an exception to the code, but some form of greenery along those lines.
Those, that line's already going to have a six-foot fence, right?
So the north and south is conditioned to have a six-foot fence.
And five, it was.
And the perimeter landscaping.
It's would be 10 feet unless we've conditioned that we change it.
Right. The revised plan shows a five-foot offset from the fence. On the south side, you have the the sidewalk on the north. And I'm just going to ask the, what do you, what do you think? Do you have a suggestion on what you're thinking? Uh, we technically closed the public hearing and so I sure, let's go ahead and reopen it and hear what the applicant would suggest. Go ahead.
Good evening. Good evening again, Chairman and Commissioners. We just did this for the city over on 41st Street for our boardwalk property. And Betty Gumm and Jenna and I worked on planter boxes that we built and put in vegetation and, and to block the utility vaults and the sector cabinets. That's one idea we could happily do. As far as the north and south perimeters for landscaping, you, yes, you have the six-foot fence, but we can also provide some kind of, even if it's a maybe every 15 feet, a tree and some shrubbery that provides some beautification. Keeping in mind that we re, really do care what this looks like. Uh, if you look next door, we, we overspent and overbuilt because we care. And so we want this to have the same following theme. So putting some trees and some shrubbery on both north and south are totally acceptable to us. And then on 40th Street, we could do some additional planter boxes and things. We'll bring in the irrigation. We'll, we'll figure all that. That's our, that's on our end. But we have no problem with where you're going with this. And also in full agreement with the lighting, that's a very sensible request and we want it to be safe. So some, some, maybe not the full-blown, uh, fixed unit lighting that we had proposed, but something to give adequate coverage for safety without question would be, would be appropriate. And if I may add one last thought on the biking, you folks, uh, about a year ago approved our bike knoll that we're going to be putting in on, on the north side of the greenbelt. Where there's going to be even additional bike racks and benches for people to look at the river and enjoy the area. So there is a enormous amount of, uh, bike, uh, facilities out on the public greenbelt and on the knoll that we're building. So I agree that the biking requirement at the parking lot probably would be not used much in possibly premature.
Are there any questions for the applicant with that being said?
Nope.
All right. Thank you. So I, I have a question for staff. So if there is an installation of trees at this point and there is redevelopment, that is going to trigger potentially a replacement of the caliber of the trees in the future, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, tree mitigation would be required.
So if the trees are then pulled, there's a replacement in five years, it could be fairly large just to consider with the landscaping requirements. Uh, any other comments from, I guess we'd have to ask for the public testimony? Right? No public testimony? All right, we do have a signup sheet for this item. By Francis Fallon. As neutral, uh, do not wish to testify, wish to be considered an interested party. And the comment is, uh, there is a property line dispute and I would like to reserve the right to appeal. So we will add that to the record. Any other public testimony? All right. Hearing none, we will close the public testimony and return back to discussions amongst the commissioners. So with that testimony from the applicant, any additional thought on landscaping or any of the other items prior to a motion? All right, we will entertain a motion. All right, thank you.
A move that we approve, CUP FY 2024-8 permanent subject to staff conditions with the following exceptions. Well, perhaps I should rephrase, to be deferred for a period of five years, but within the five-year window, subject to following exceptions, that lighting is installed compliant with code for safety considerations. That the north and south perimeters have a six-foot fence and say, greenery in the form of trees and shrubs. Without putting any specific numbers, but generally along the north and south perimeter. And then along 40th Street, some form of beautification landscaping. With the recommendation that those be in the form of planter boxes.
I have a motion from Commissioner Smith. Do I have a second? Have a second for, from Commissioner Shepard? Uh, any further discussion on this matter? All right, hearing none, we'll take it to vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. He knows. You guys have it. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item D CPA FY 2024-0005, a design review and administration. The purpose of the amendment is to clarify if there is an objection to the planning official's decision. If the city council will hear the application as a de novo public hearing or an appeal that is not de novo. The proposal also includes the proposal to delete GCC-6D-3F as it is conflicting provision. The proposal suggests reorganization that are not material that may result in a better organization of the code. Uh, the proposed amendment intends to merge code and the public hearing procedures adopted by the resolution. So we will hear from staff on this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the commission. Uh, and, and thank you for the great introduction. I, uh, the chairman has indicated the exact reasons that this code rewrite and is brought before you tonight. Um, I'd like to start with just a little bit of a history of, uh, the design review process in Garden City. Years and years ago, design review hearings were held with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, and then I believe in 2008, um, there was an attempt to, um, make design review a little bit more efficient and have, uh, the, a design review, a committee or board. And the process that was started then was if there was, um, any sort of an appeal or an objection, uh, to a noticing and then the, the hearing would be held. The city attorney looked at that and said, wait a minute. I'm not so sure we can be doing that in the, in this format. If you're going to have an appointed decision-making, uh, body, then you need to have a public hearing for all of that. And so the way that design review, um, is intended is that it's a little bit iterative in nature to help, uh, refine applications and into the best possible uh, a way that they can achieve, uh, code. And really helping applicants understand the intent of code as they go through the process. And, and there was some hearing fatigue, both by the applicants as well as the public in going through that process with every time an applicant, uh, changed a tree. Not, not quite to that extreme, having to open it up to a public hearing. And so, um, most recently, the code, uh, had addressed design review by removing that appointed body. And now consultants lend their expertise to staff and staff is the ultimate decision maker. And there is still a provision that, um, an, an appeal can trigger a hearing. Uh, however, it's not clear whether that's a, a straight appeal or a de novo hearing. And, and more specifically, I want to speak to you. And the reason I gave you the history is that there is the ability for staff in this current version to uh, recommend a public hearing with the city council. And right now it states that the grounds for recommending a public hearing are if the, it is, if it's unclear if the proposal's meeting code. Um, or there's significant adverse impact to the city. Um, it, right before this meeting, uh, Mr. Jones in the, in in the audience tonight, and I had an interesting discussion about, uh, where you may hear his testimony tonight. Uh, indicating that he thinks that the code isn't quite getting there, the proposal isn't quite getting there. Um, because code needs to, uh, be very specific. Um, and so if there is a gray area in code and staff absolutely agrees with this, your code can't have gray areas. Then, then staff should either approve or deny, uh, at the application. I, I do, um, want to note that, uh, design reviews, uh, can pack a room. Just, uh, last Monday, um, the, the, this room was packed on a design review, um, hearing. And so the public does, uh, care about some of the di, design reviews. Uh, but many, many of the design reviews, most I would say that go through the city. There is no public testimony. There's no comment on whatsoever. And also as, as a planner who has to go through continuing education credits, I would also note that the last, uh, run of me going through and, and watching webinars and whatnot for that purpose. Um, almost all of the, the things that I watched were talking about how the it's important to be nimble at this point in time. Technology is changing, uses are changing so quickly right now that it, it is very hard for your code to anticipate everything that might come up. Um, you can see recently we have e-scooters and e-bikes. And certainly five, 10 years ago, you didn't see those around, for example. And how those are being addressed. And, um, also if, if code is very black and white, which it needs to be, um, and there's not the ability to have hearings. Um, staff is always going to be conservative as they should be in their administration of code. And that may limit creativity. Even tonight, you hear creativity being requested where something's a temporary use, but doesn't fit into code's requirement of, uh, temporary use and how that can be handled. Again, this is design review, not use, but design review also has, um, design standards that may uh, could be potentially addressed creatively as, as technology changes. Um, one thing that I thought could be an option is to split, further refine, uh, with design review. That everything goes to hearing and refine what could be staff level and what could go to hearing. Is, is an option to, to deal with that. And, and that's just me, um, during this hearing, thinking through this. The other thing that Mr. Jones may, uh, provide testimony on, um, that we discussed prior to this, prior to me getting up here is, um, there is, uh, there are provisions where timeframes have been re, removed. For the processing of applications. He had suggested to me that perhaps a better way of doing that is to add the timeframes back in and perhaps have a process to extend, uh, those timeframes that's worked in to the code itself. And so the, the code stays very clear on the timeframes, but there is the ability to, for staff to extend those timeframes if needed. And, and I would note that I've been around, uh, long enough to see, um, certainly depending on what kind of app or kind of atmosphere that we're in, things certainly Atmosphere that we're in, things certainly do change. You have COVID, you have. A boom come to the Treasure Valley and your timeframes might be something, uh, very different than you could ever anticipate. Uh, certainly, um, as long as I've been here, the city does endeavor, uh, to get items through as quickly as possible. Um, almost always, um, as people apply, they're on the next hearing cycle. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, hearing no questions, uh, we will open it up for public testimony. And I was handed a public hearing sheet for not this one. But I know that we have people in the audience that might speak, so do we have a sheet for anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Can you, uh, just do a, your sheet real quick and then give it to staff?
Just identify yourself.
Okay. Yep.
Um, Jason Jones, two oh eight East Thirty Third Street. Um, yeah, Jenna kind of just covered everything that we talked about. I just. You know, I think, I think the changes are necessary because there were problems with the process. Because there were terms that were not clear and they've been cleaning it up. But I think, you know, my main concern is making the process pretty clear to somebody who's looking at what's going to happen to their application. Um, I think instead of taking out the timelines, having those extensions is kind of what they do for everything. Now, I, I, my only concern with that is that sometimes like in some agencies, they automatically immediately just give out extensions. Um, so if they're not gonna, you know, if they. Even if they're gonna meet the timeline, sometimes like for a public information request, they immediately just, when you submit it, they go, oh, here's the thing that we're asking for an extension of the time. Um, so that can be, so sometimes it just becomes a process that doesn't mean anything. But I think here, um, knowing Jenna and Hannah, they're always trying to work to get it done. But I think, you know, there are times where it is going to take more than what, whatever it was originally, thirty days. So in my mind, having some notice of like ten days prior to that, where you would require, hey, notice from the city. That way it's not always just a given, like as soon as something happens, so it's like, oh, here, we're asking for sixty days instead. But, uh, there could be some extension in there. Um, the only other thing that I really saw in there that I didn't like was, um. I find it. Again, that kind of idea that you're still gonna possibly have public hearings on stuff that's administrative. And I think when I talk to Jen, I think one of the really big things here is that. Design review, uh, is considered like, design review applications are considered by right developments. What that means is you have a right to do it. You're not asking for a variance, you're not. You're not even getting a conditional use, meaning the city really can't put more conditions on it than what are actually in the code. And so in my mind, like then having a public hearing. Because the code, because the explanation here is that the code isn't clear enough that the city knows what their design review says. Like what the code says is kind of a way to just say, yeah, we actually should get sued and lose. Because you have to have code that has express standards that are written. And they should be something that the applicant can read. And if they meet the code and the, uh, city staff thinks it meets the code. Then it should get approved. There shouldn't need to be an extra public hearing. And then if somebody does disagree, then they can appeal it. So there's still an appeal process, but now we've added like another funny hearing in between an actual appeal hearing. And it just to me seems like somebody doesn't like it, so they go, hey, we gotta have a public hearing. Then you have this public hearing, then they still don't like the decision that gets made, which gets approved at the public hearing. And then they appeal it and then you have another public hearing. And, and in this case, all you're really doing at the second public hearing is letting whoever appealed it get a public hearing. Nobody else gets to testify because you're gonna make it, uh, not, no longer de novo. But it just seems like excessive. You know, if somebody's gonna appeal it, let them appeal it, let them have that public hearing at the city council. And then don't have some middle hearing that maybe doesn't mean anything. So that's, that's my comments.
Thank you very much. Any other public testimony? All right, hearing none, we'll hear back from staff, please.
Um, just as a, a point of clarification that, uh, did come up. Uh, the way that this, uh, ordinance is drafted is that, that the public hearing would go directly to city council. Uh, which would be the final decision-making body and there wouldn't be an appeal ability if staff is to recommend a public hearing the way that it's drafted. Um, otherwise, any appeal that is made of the staff's decision goes directly to city council as well. Um, and so I just wanted to clarify that one, there, there wouldn't be a middle, uh, public hearing at the way that it's currently drafted. Thank you.
Questions for Stoneborough? All right, thank you very much. We will close the public hearing and, uh, for this item, we are a recommended body to city council. We'll open it up for discussion, Commissioner Wild.
Stick around long enough. One of everything will happen, I think. Uh, Jason just told us, uh, it, it's not usual for a developer to tell us we're giving it too much process, due process. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that we're. Maybe giving too much due process. Um, that said, um, the, the, the changes make sense to me, um, to the extent that they are, are not clear. I think an applicant can solicit staff's. Clarity on, on the changes. I think they are clear. So I'm supportive of the changes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Smith?
I'm also supportive of the changes. I think it's an important clarification. I know this issue has been tossed around. Several, several of our sister jurisdictions, so I think, uh, I think it's an important clarification. I support it.
You, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Shepherd?
I agree with Commissioners Wild and Smith, and I am in support of the changes.
Thank you very much. I too am supportive of the changes. I agree with fellow commissioners. And, uh, don't have anything further to add on this matter with that. I'll entertain a motion if we're ready for one.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wild.
I'll move approval of CPA FY twenty twenty four dash five.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wilds. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Shepherd, any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. He knows, you guys have it. All right, thank you. And, um, Jenna, just a point of order for the agenda. So we did move the other item to consent. So I just want to confirm that since we did hold it open, the public. Public can submit testimony, we did receive one in the basket that was for testimony. So with that, um, would it be appropriate for them to provide testimony? Uh, to you, or how would we need to handle that since it was moved to consent?
Um, Chairman, I, I might suggest, uh, that certainly if they reach out to me with comments, that I can get that as part of the record. Um, otherwise, uh, in order to provide that, uh, testimony, since it's already, um, been continued to October sixteenth. That they should come back on October sixteenth to provide verbal testimony.
Thank you, just so. Everybody in the audience who would like to come back and do so. Uh, with that, any other discussion from the commission?
Prior to September work session, by what date would you like our questions and or comments? Couple weeks.
Uh, Chairman, Commissioner Wild, uh, yes, please, uh, two weeks prior would be. Uh, preferable to give me enough time to make sure they are addressed. Thank you.
All right, so that would mean that we would need to have the comments to Jenna for the item by September fourth.
Mr. Chairman, to clarify, that's the commissioner's comments.
Yes.
True.
Um, and. And Chairman members of the commission, just as a clarification too, you, you always can call me if you just want to talk through things as well.
Mr. Chair, could you please repeat the day you just said for?
Yep, so please have your comments to Jenna by September fourth. So that she can prepare and be ready for the work session on September eighteenth. With the hearing that would be followed in October sixteen. Any other discussion? All right, we will adjourn. Thank you all.